Let's go ahead with world call, Mr. Hughes.
Thank you, Ryan, Ward one.
Brian Green, Ward two.
Ryan sending Ward two.
Travis Scherz, Ward one.
Sorry to play you.
Yep.
No, I think she said she was, but she might not. It was on, like when we were reaching to start.
Hey, Sarah, can you hear us now? Sarah, you're off mute. Can you hear us? All right, good. Okay, let's do the pledge of allegiance.
United Nations, take a flag of the United States of America. Consider it a republic for which it stands. When invasion, we're not invincible with liberty and justice for all.
Let's go ahead and review the approval of the minutes. From what I understand, we already have one edit. It says June 30th on the document and it should be June 13th. So just know that that is the first edit of that. Is there any other edits that we needed or not?
Yes. I did not see anyone. Can we? All right. Can we approve them even though it says June 13th?
You can approve the amended minutes if we.
This is not, this isn't June 13th, though. This is June 30th. The agenda is June 13th. It's supposed to be said June 13th on the agenda.
Oh, I misunderstood. I'm sorry.
You're backwards.
I'm backwards. Strike that. I'm backwards. So this is June 30th. So this is.
So that, that's okay. Yeah, but it's not on the agenda. So what just happened?
With that thing?
Yep, because we approved those on June 30th.
My boy confused now.
I see. Yep. The general says it's June 30th. It says it's June 13th.
I'll leave you now. Okay, then we can bump into next time. Not a big deal.
Yep.
Just so you know, these are unofficially approved.
So, yeah. No action needed on that.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, Travis. Okay, names payable. Any questions?
Middle of the front page down where it says Paul Clark. Building inspection, June 26th, number two. That's on there twice. Is that supposed to be on there twice? Or is it a double billing for the same thing?
And they will all save them out.
Okay.
I see. Are we, why don't we do that pay for us check? That's a, that's a monthly thing for storage. Oh, yeah.
Okay, so when we transferred servers to servers, we just wanted to make sure we had everything we need. So all we have to do is have a conversation with our new IT services and then we'll be able to let that go. So Lacy, let's call that an action item for this month and let's confirm that we have everything that we have, that we need. And then we should be able to end that stretch of. We wanted it to go a couple of months just to make sure we had everything.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yep.
You're just asked.
Yes.
You got that one?
Yep. Okay. Anything else?
I answered a question on the Paul Clark. He did have two separate in voices. All different under.
Thank you.
I make a motion to approve claims.
Okay, Travis made the first.
Second.
Ryan's at the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, public time. Yes, ma'am.
You know me.
I choose to state the record, yeah.
I know.
Okay.
I was wondering who is responsible for the sign of the Veterans Memorial right now?
The sign hanging off the flagpost? That is the legion.
Legion.
Legion. And reach out into the legion just to have it like maintained currently has been really.
I can, I can talk to you.
Really important.
Well, Lacy.
Thing to anybody. Right. Figure out. I just, even if it's the legion, even if the city, anybody, it's just such an important thing, not just for the city, but just what it stands for. I really think it just needs to be maintained and it's been falling every.
Lacy. Cool. Thanks, Ash. Anyone else?
Oh, he's out of town, so I'll call somebody.
He could be back here about any day.
Is he now?
Yeah, they flew back in.
Did he get his?
Yeah, I think, yep, I think they're back home now. If they're not today, I think they are.
Anyone else? Okay. On old business, Grant Park Agreement, actually, yeah, Grant Park Agreement. And that was purely informational. As you all know, that we had a, an agreement signed with the developer to turn the building permits back on. So right at this point in time, is there any building permits that are in play? We had one, we had one paper application, right, with no plans? Okay, so we've had one paper application, but there's been no plans submitted with it yet. So we really can't approve just a paper application. And is there any other updates on that? Um, I believe the developer submitted a plan for a detention pond. And so we haven't seen those plans yet, but as soon as we do, Justin, you haven't received those, have you? Okay.
Oh, because people slash Friday. Process review. I'm going to be around to welcome this review by Friday. I, I first body of the fair, I can hear. They're updated and they're aware of the process that I might have.
Perfect. Okay, so those were the two updates that we needed. So thank you. Okay, and so now on to the petition.
Well, since we're going to go into the exec session to talk about the petition, I would rather we move that down below item 12.
Okay.
I'd like to make the motion to move petition to under item 12. C, fire technique, after B, fire techniques.
Okay. John, okay, so we have a first, we have a second to move petition down to 12C. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. So we're going to go on to Dell's ambulance request. Lacy, you're going to have to help me on this one. There was a letter.
Yes. You? Yep.
Thank you.
My name is Nathan Somerville, the Department of the Ambulance Service. And then what we're doing is what we're doing with all the communities and kind of our coverage area, which is really kind of the top third of the, our top 10th county. Um, is we're just looking for support to kind of help our operations that way. Um, a little bit of background, last year we had over 500 calls for service in our entire area. This year, gradually, and I'm pleased to get this under. Last year was a record and we're already surpassing that. So we're seeing more and more demand with that way. We are based out of Dallas, have two trucks we always have, or we try to have one truck staff, I don't think, probably with one paramedic and EMT. As much as we can just to provide that ALS service. Um, and what we're requesting from the cities is kind of a piece of how we're funding our operations. Um, and that comes from funds coming from the cities, from the townships, from the county. Um, and then also as much as most of what we can get from the insurance billing. Uh, which is if anybody's had to pay insurance bills lately or had an evil bat, that's a big, really more challenging. So it's kind of just one chunk of, of everything and how we're funding our operations. Um, a lot of the brands and things like that, which we've been successful with equipment, will cover your equipment costs, but they don't necessarily go up to your operations. And for us, really, the biggest thing there is payroll, the pride of the team, enough people to cover the gills. We're not unique. That's a situation that pretty much every EMS service in the country is in as far as trying to find enough people to staff your trucks. Um, and so seeing this kind of a differential creep in wages, just out of necessity, especially as it falls, they're always running for it. And, and so that's what we're trying to do is we're trying to increase that a little bit just to credit the really good people. Keep them not only developed, but making sure that they always have trucks available, especially for more demand throughout, you know, throughout the year. And, you know, we're talking wages, just to kind of give everybody an idea, we're still talking less than fast group wages as well. So nobody's getting rich doing this, but it's just, it's something to try to maintain the good quality of staff that we have and making the service we have. So any support would be greatly appreciated.
So are you looking, what is your ask?
I believe it was $10,000 this year.
Okay.
Leave that for list.
And we already subsidized $5,000 of that? Is that, we only, so we paid five, so what you're asking for is another five?
Yeah.
Okay.
What do we, have we paid in the past on a yearly basis? I mean, do we, is this, do you know what those amounts were? Every year?
It's been five every year, hasn't it?
I think every year.
I just was curious. I don't remember what, remember we talked about, I don't remember what that amount was. I know we did, even the fire department in Baltic, we, we up whatever we were giving them, obviously, everything increases over time. So. Yeah.
And what cities do you serve again?
Uh, really, we're, uh, Del, Del Rapids, Golden, Golden Brooks. And lines. And then really our coverage area is going south down to pass midway, we'll go over to almost to, um, Highway 19, just short of that, kind of J, and then we'll go west and kind of a, what do we mean of repairs and, oh, bypass there over the 478, always pass that.
So just guessing, what you're doing is estimating your, your increase in costs and then just kind of divvying up that against the five committee or communities that you're serving to help us kind of spread the love and, and share the weight kind of a thing? Are you doing it based on population or are you doing it on the number of calls that you've serviced in the past? Are you just going even Steven across five communities?
Uh, we're kind of looking at whatever, whatever you need to operate, much, but they're going to give me certainly, we looked at Dells. Say 50 years old.
Okay.
And obviously bigger population, they've got more, you know, more to provide that way. So we're kind of judging and realizing smaller communities don't have as much of a budget there to work with and, and sequence available.
Well, thank you for, um, projecting a sliding scale for our little town. We appreciate that. And so, um, although this isn't a budgeted amount, is this something that we want to budget in this fiscal or do we want to shoot for next fiscal? What are you guys' thoughts on this or do you have other questions?
How much for questions? I guess I'm not opposed to opposed to approving another 5,000. To help their cost, obviously, as a main ambulance supplier in the area, that's an important tool to have. I would make the motion to approve the 5,000 for this year and then probably subsequently budget for that amount in coming years.
So 10,000.
Correct.
Is there any other discussion on this or do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. So Travis is going to make the motion to go ahead and bump that up, pay another 5,000 in this fiscal. And then going forward, budget 10,000 in future fiscal years to support our ambulance service. And so Travis is doing the first. Ryan is doing the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? You have your funding. Additional funding. No, we thank you. We thank, unfortunately, we've needed your services several times this year and, and with with my own family. So we appreciate very much what you, what makes a difference. And it comes home when it, when it hits.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Off to your part. Now you're judging really hard.
We are very, very aware of how blessed we are with our firefighters. We are very, very blessed to have a good fire station. We're very grateful to them as well. Thank you. Thank you. Um, on to the welcome sign. Um, the last time we addressed the welcome sign, I believe, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, I might be wrong, that, um, we were going to talk with the citizens about what they thought about the welcome sign to get their feedback. So the council could make a more informed decision about what direction to go. So if we're in a different place in that conversation, just bring me up to speed and then go from there.
We had a car, or at the, uh, at the.
Coffee with council.
Yep.
And what I gather is everybody likes something different.
It's a really good conversation.
Well, you can't really please everybody, can you?
Yeah, everybody likes something different. Do we have the street? I don't think anything was.
Oh.
My money. Do you have yours?
We're just going to pull it up off the website from the happy and just see how it.
Essentially, I gather it was kind of a combination of all four. All four options that were submitted. Because if I remember right, what was that, an Excel grant? That's up to 5,000.
Yep.
Here we go.
Very.
Yeah. There's that one, but then there's also the.
Well, yeah, yeah, there's. Yeah.
Yeah. I thought. Double sided really worked because the visibility.
Yeah. First lost my spot, right?
So that was the one with the little swirl that everybody saw. That was a single sided one.
Well, it was pretty much across the board. Nobody liked the top on that one.
Yeah.
Yeah, not that it has to be that either, just.
Right.
You know, they, not just a square cut.
Yeah, it was just curved.
I think that was retrofitted to the previous sign. It's where that was constructed.
Yeah, but then.
The little.
We're going to have to do a new cardboard. Basically, everything that design, we use the posts and attach a new backing.
Essentially blending the three together, maybe without the, the B logo, just in case that would become obsolete at some point. Obviously, the old sign made it, I don't know how old that sucker was, but.
50 years.
Probably tell you that. Um, combination of the few, um, even with the other one, you know, instead of on the bottom, a lot of people like having a little bulldog logo and home of the bulldogs, something like that. I don't, I mean.
I know, I don't get a dog in the sun, but I got to agree with Travis, putting the logo on it, outdated, and it will make it obsolete if we ever change the logo. So just having the worst.
The middle one. Was one that people like that.
Right.
But scratch.
Would be home of the bulldogs, right? Wasn't that the?
Something I got with the little, with the little dog.
The general consensus, what I got from everybody that I talked to was kind of the favorable.
Yeah.
So and then what was the other one?
Well.
The other, the other thing was both logos. None of the citizens that I have serving on the board here do with that one. So we looked at it.
That was the other, that was the other.
Honestly, I liked that one too.
This one, I believe, was tearing out everything and starting anew. Um, it would be wired in, um, because of the sign's backlit and was double sided. Some of the beef with that was that the sign is, the way the road curves in, the way it's angled, the back of the sign would be redundant because you would never see it.
Right.
Um, that's kind of where, and I think this one was tapped right up to that $5,000 mark. If anybody.
I think you're right. And then also there would be electrical needs for this, even though the electricity would be installed pro bono or, you know.
Yep.
For free, there would be an ongoing electrical expense with this, with this sign.
And there was an idea, there were talk of two of, I think the other sign was under budget by about 1,400 bucks, if I recall correctly.
Yep.
There was talk about routing power, um, actually paying hubers for once to do some work. Um, as a usage of some of that, that grant money to light that sign. Um, so it's easier, more visible.
That and the business sign. So they were both lit.
Yeah, get power in there for both.
Yeah.
If you're going to run power.
Sign it all to light up the two side.
Yeah, and I don't know what, how much it actually costs to, to light it, but, you know.
We could just take the difference and give it to hubers is what you're saying.
Yep.
That's, yeah.
That's.
Well, because there was also discussion that with the lower price sign, we could do one coming in from the west and one coming in from the east if we wanted to, and then maybe the same.
Came down to.
Yeah, Brian, you talk, talk about that. So.
Yeah, I think it was, we just didn't know where it was placed.
Right. Thing with Ryan's already having one over there in the first place.
And they haven't installed it yet, though. It's not there.
Right. Granted, it's in town a little ways now, more than it was.
Well, guys, we got lots of options. Do you want to kick the can or do you want to make a decision? What would you like to do?
I was taking a look at that toward the signing, so I'd like to make a decision.
Yeah.
Okay, make a decision.
If they would, what I would do is take that middle one, can you bop over to that other?
Yep.
Slide. The middle one on the bottom said, put home of the bulldogs, whether it's in that writing or with a, like a small bulldog logo on one end or either end of it. Um, and then, yep.
And then clean up the top edge.
Yeah, whatever, however the top edge pans out. I mean, it doesn't necessarily have to be like that, but some sort of contour would be fine to give it a some.
Does anybody care about the swirly, swirly little decorative?
You know, honestly, they just would be that connectedness. Yes, leave that arch, I think, but just not leave it.
Yeah. Yeah, the arch.
It gives a little something, I guess.
I would say, or be squared off.
It's very sexy.
Yeah.
Very sexy.
Like if you're trying to. Home of the bulldog.
Yeah, it's going to fill up quick.
If you raise the whole, walk the whole thing, you might have to put like a bulldog.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and then find with, as you fine tune the adjustments on that to, I mean, obviously do what you think is correct as far as spacing and, and things like that. But general consensus, what I got, that middle one, the home of the bulldogs on the bottom, we can route some power down there and get it lit up.
Okay, so this is what I'm hearing. Correct me if I'm wrong. Is somehow make the top of that sign not look like it's from 1964. No offense to 1964. And, um, use welcome to Baltic South Dakota. On the bottom, have home of the bulldogs, hopefully with the logo of the bulldogs for, in honor of the school. And then we got ourselves a sign.
Deal. With lights.
And then obviously, and any differential of cost, we go to hubers to help light up not one, but both sides. That's, that's what I got on the table for motion and I got that's right.
That is my motion.
Okay. So, okay, so we got it first. We got to set, so this is what I need. I need you guys to make a motion. That Fod has the authority to read. See what I did there? See what I did there? That Fod has the authority to negotiate the design and installation of that sign so we can get going on this without having to deal with the minutia of another meeting.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I will.
Okay.
And we have some, uh, members like to.
Yeah.
Wants to be the sign approver.
Brian and I.
I can be on, I can email it too.
I'll send it off to everybody.
Okay, so the motion then is going to be all of the things I said about the sign with a final design email approval from council. And then Ryan will see to the installation.
Will.
Okay, did we get that in the motion? That was long. Long, very wordy. Yes, Debbie. Boy, yeah, because if people don't know where they're at, they're really out of trouble. I don't know unless, unless they're coming from Minnesota, it's not that far.
Okay, post the border.
Yes, right.
Doesn't really leave that under.
I'd put it on there. Some.
I'd leave South Dakota there. Absolutely. Look out of it. How about soda?
I, I, I like your point, though. You know, those people from Pipestone, sometimes they might get misdirected and not know where they're at, right? Or Island, you know, you go left instead of right, the next thing you know, this isn't Jackson. Um. Okay, do we have all that now? I, okay, just. Okay. Travis is the first.
Brian was the second.
Ryan has the second.
Brian.
Ryan has the second, sorry. Travis for Ryan has the second. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed?
Woo hoo, we got a sign.
Gosh, that's, that was amazing. Good, fast, beautiful decision we got it. Onto way more fun things. Chickens. So the last time we talked about chickens, um, there was going to be a couple of, um, council members that were involved and told to do some chicken research. So what's the results of that chicken committee? Where are you too chicken?
We should have brought a bucket of chicken. We missed it.
Oh, no, we talked to 30 people. And out of 30 people, 10 said yes and 10 said no or maybe. And so I'd say 10 no's. 10, you know, to the point.
Anybody else?
I, I did 30.
Do you research any other ordinances?
Yes.
Yes.
A little bit everybody has, if I remember correctly.
We had.
Marcy did a great job bringing us a whole bunch of ordinances to review. It's fantastic.
Have we crafted an ordinance for so?
And that would have to go to town.
Well, I think we're to go with the one from Garrett.
Garrett.
Correct.
So if I'm hearing you guys correctly, you reviewed other ordinances from other towns and you found an ordinance that you thought was worth review.
Superbowl was kind of loose.
Okay. So they had loose chickens.
No, I mean. It was kind of.
Sorry.
That was kind of foul. So.
Okay, yes, Ryan.
I got some notes to keep like, so you have to be licensed, right? It's just kind of like a dog license. You'll license it. It is revocable, right?
Okay.
Um, you have to be able to per inspection.
Yeah.
You gotta have a coop, you gotta have, uh, yeah, there. Um.
Yeah.
Yeah, fed watered up. So that's all part of the inspection, clean conditions. Uh, 150 inspection, what else? We thought about, we want decent ducks on it?
Not yet. Let's see how chickens go first. Okay. One foul at a time.
Okay.
One foul.
Strike those birds off.
Okay.
All right.
The beach chicken you don't like?
What's that?
The beach chicken.
Yes, and they have to have a collar, no?
If it's a.
Cause there's some really good skirts out there.
If it's a rental, we have to have the owner of the property sign on. Sure.
Okay.
I thought that was, is that what come on?
Okay, so if I understand, are you done with your notes? I'm sorry.
Single family residents, permanent safety liabilities.
Okay. So, John, if I'm understanding correctly, now that they've identified an ordinance worth review, it probably should go to you as legal counsel to review it to make sure it aligns with the ordinances locally. And, um, make sure it includes how many a person can have, just so that's clear. And then, um, from there, then we present the ordinance to review. It goes through the ordinance process. So then we submit the ordinance. Everybody gets to read it. Then you got to, um, you have until the, um, second reading, which will be whenever the next meeting is typically is a month later. And then if we approve that without any extreme changes, then we wait, we go ahead and approve that. Then you have the 21 days. If you want to petition against that, you can petition against it. Otherwise, after 21 days after the publishing date, then we will be officially a chicken community. So that's the process.
Yeah. We all agree on no roosters. But what if, what if there's a rooster in there? How do you dispose of it?
We, right.
Oh, yeah, I mean.
Okay, what is it? A chicken finger?
To be called, according to the Garrett's ordinance of cockerels are supposed to be called from readings. Um, readings prohibited for Garrett's ordinance.
So these are the things that the citizens that are bro chicken need to review. Once we get this ordinance done, everybody can review it as the citizens of the faulty. If there's anything you love, anything you hate, that's the time to come to council. Tell us what it is that you like. And then we'll, we'll tweak it for our own city's needs and go from there and follow the normal ordinance process. We good with that? John, do we need to make a motion to send that over to you or are we good on legal review and then we address it during the ordinance process?
Just direct me. I, I did take your direction. Produce some ordinance.
John, I'm going to direct you to go ahead and review that Garrett's chicken ordinance, if you don't mind. And then come, come back with us with some chickens. I'm more of a fan of those, what are those peeps? I'm more a fan of peeps rather than chipettes, but I like marshmallows.
Yeah. Quick question for somebody who's got that ordinance. Does it say we're on the property in, in or in that?
I have.
25 feet for adhaling. Poop size may not exceed 30 square feet. The expense and requirements still limit prevent access by rodents.
Deb, what I would suggest is once he does that initial review, we'll just get it out to everybody so you can often take a look at it.
Find some of those ourselves and chips. Probably wants ourselves a chicken.
Or someone put it in the little boulevard area.
Yeah, on place for chicken.
Yeah, that is very.
They specified, cuz that was within the twenty-five feet away from their dwelling.
So they had drive-by cluckiness, what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, enough of the, enough of the old jokes.
Then you walk down the room, walk between chicken coop and the house while you're walking on the side.
Did the chickens chase you or?
Smith property, just about the hoops.
No, we want backyard property.
Yeah, really good point, that's favorite, they would allow that, they would allow a side yard, e, sure.
Well, those are things we all need to take into consideration, though, so let's make sure that we all take a look at it. Everybody has different neighborhoods and different bills and different sized yards, and so I just encourage all citizens to take a look at it, cuz once it's lost, yeah. You know, so this is the beautiful democratic process that is our city. So we're gonna give you guys the opportunity to write your own chicken law. Perfect. Okay, we good?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Thanks, John, for that.
Sure.
Edward, you're up, ballfield use.
Yeah, so uh, Baltic City, or Baltic uh, school board had a.
Would you do me a favor? Would you come up closer so that way the owl can pick you up, so when people are wondering what you're about, we know. Cool, thank you.
The school board um, had a meeting just a couple weeks ago discussing adding softball as a sanctioned sport within our school. Um, so I'm coming to the, the city to see if we can work out an agreement between the city and the school on the use of the fields. Um, in the meantime, we've had discussion with our insurance agent at our school, and they've assured us that we can get insurance coverage at those fields for our athletes and coaches and things like that, so. Um, insurance is an issue, um, I've talked with Barb House at the BAA to just see kind of how that agreement and arrangement is working currently with the city. Um, and I work with Barb House all the time, and so, yeah, she's great. So, um, just kind of telling to you guys to see if we can work out an agreement or some sort of arrangement to make that happen. Um, as far as the softball season is concerned, it starts um, like second, third week of March, and it goes until the first week in June. Um, March eighteenth to the exact is the first lawful practice. And then the state season, so our softball team were to make it to state, who likely practice during that time, we're leaving up to it. Um, the state season for this year goes till June first to the third. That would be, I would assume that the girls would practice right up to that first date, and then they made it past that or play more games up during that state tournament, they likely practice at those fields, not come back.
Sure, is it a fair ask that you kind of write something up for us so we kind of understand the dates, times you need, what it need, you know, what access you need, what contributions you're asking from the city versus
Yes.
contributions you guys are doing, and like, if there's specific expenses or costs that the city needs to consider in that, that'd be great.
So I put together a cost analysis for our school board as far as what it would take to start a completely brand-new program fee for all of the equipment, all of the field shock, it would be paying for all the bases. Um, literally anything that you would need pretty much starting easier. Um, and so, just kind of coming to you guys to, to give guidance on what kind of costs in, within that, if the city already have, if the city already has bases, you know, talking with Barb, they got bases, they got stitching mounts, things like that, um, you know, talking to her again, you know, I think that they paid for some of the field shock, and the city paid for some bases, they paid for some bases, just what can the school do to, to help with that, once, maybe just talking, talking with you guys, um, at the city on which of those items would you want the school to for sure come to the, come to the table with, and which ones would be split, which ones would be already provided? Um, just kind of that guidance there, and then I can modify my cost analysis for there.
Sure, maybe what we should do, and this is just a suggestion.
Sure.
Um, what if we get you as the representative from the school, someone as a representative of BAA, someone from a representation of the council, and with review from John, you need to be part of that. And then, um, and we all talk in like a subcommittee?
Sure.
And try to work out all the asks and everything like that, then we can kind of figure out what makes sense, what doesn't, then we can come back to council with a more organized agreement, because what, what I'd love to avoid is you having to keep coming back.
Oh, absolutely.
You know, and so, not that we love having you here, but you know what I mean, if we can just do the work.
For sure.
And then come back with a formal presentation, kind of working it out, and that's great, too, because then we can figure out what BAA needs versus sanctioned softball, right, softball um, needs, and then um, then that allows us to figure things out, and this is perfect. Justin, do you need to be a part of that? Or not so much? Is it every field you need, or?
It would be just softball.
So just the heights?
What, Heights or River Park two?
Texas, well, if it'd be softball for the BAA, do you know what a size, thirty were?
So regardless of the field size, in my cost analysis, I have a temporary fence that, okay, but uh, that if we need to purchase that, we can, we can do that, because they want it to be a very specific
Sure.
to be sanctioned, it has to be a very specific um, field or fence length, so we can have a temporary.
Would it be River Park two, or?
It would be the height and I'm with just Tri Valley sanctioned the last year.
Sure.
School district bought temporary fence, and the city, first of the quarters, didn't play that out, they put the mountains for the fields, so that they set it up. The one thing in the city during our party, talking to Barb, that field was tied up for, you know, softball for that beginning of the season, so if they remain state, it does influence how many gates are up here for the ball association.
When does BAA usually kick in for the fields?
It'll have May or June.
Okay.
So they, they can practice in Kibai Valley, you use the, the ball association, use those fields to practice on, which is that was field was set up for softball, what would it be? For QBs, and younger kids can use it, but then for like misses, teenagers, and it was they had a whole mountain, it's kind of a need to hold on, never, not so much.
So.
As soon as.
Or something they can use for something like this, or it's just a.
Park is set up.
Thank you, okay.
It's all, it's a grass field, so it's, if it was a, with turf and field, it could be set up for softball user, but it just won't.
Okay. So. Just curious, for those of us who don't know.
Yeah.
As soon as, as soon as the snow melts and the ground can hold it, kids are up there practicing their softball and baseball. As soon as they can.
Okay.
I'm interested in the school says, like, what hours of the day is it practicing?
Usually, like, as far as all of our other sanctioned sports, they usually start at four o'clock, you know, thirty. Then usually go until about six or later.
Okay.
It can be a lot of scheduling issues.
Maybe only once you had a lot of multi-sport, right? Yes, we will allow them to be multi-sport, and we will, so it's working with track and golf and around those.
And the BA.
Yeah, yeah.
It's gonna be huge.
If there's some, yeah, and that's where it's like, you know, we need to practice on a different field, you know, one another day, or if there's something Tri Valley, like, that, that's kind of the stuff that.
Like, like, practice, you could obviously, for now, practice, you could.
Yeah, yeah.
Actually, I was saying, whole names that, that.
Right.
You'd prefer for it to be.
Yeah, then especially with bars.
And I tossed a term about it in advance already about just scheduling field time and things like that, how that would look, and, or I've already kind of got it.
Sure.
Is this is gonna be something that we will need lights for, the qualify or not so much?
Uh, yes.
We will need lights.
We will need lights.
Okay.
Well, we can we could just look up game times.
Okay.
We could, maybe the JV game, yeah, or once I touch order, but yeah.
Ryan, do you?
Yes, this will be on, softball JV plays second, which is weird to me, but. For those of us that don't, varsity first, then.
So um, sending is gonna be the representative for council. Okay. And um, yeah, just let me know and.
I do have a question about baseball. Um, we had an argument at the state tournament last weekend, is baseball sanctioned through the school? It is not.
Baseball is not sanctioned by the state.
Really? That, I didn't know that.
You can have, well, it's club baseball, but it looks like it's through the school.
Yeah, really?
Sanctioned by, sounds good, I expected it is.
Interesting. Do you see that ever happening down the road?
A lot of clubs are the reason that it's not.
One says that it was sanctioned, others.
It's the same, it's very divided front, run on those clubs, they do want it to be sanctioned, the other half, just the softball for sanctioning. Those girls cannot play football, traveling or club sports from the time you start physical practice. So that's for any sport, so anytime you're in a high school sanctioned sport, take volleyball, for example, those girls can't play at Cairo's or Pentagon and sweep balls, one of them playing high school volleyball.
Which is all.
There's no free agent. Got it, got it, okay.
Kids volleyball at Pentagon, so yeah.
The only exception is if you happen to be not a baseball student.
Right.
Junior high school.
And you're playing up to say varsity.
Got it.
Well, as soon as you play varsity, then you can, then you.
So JV.
Interesting. Look at all the stuff we're learning, chickens, softball, everything.
This will, then the ball, baseball being attached to those strings, that's all the soccer stuff here, everything that is, I'll get plenty of rage.
Got it.
Can be.
Doctor's next, I'm ready.
Wrestling's next.
Oh, yeah, that makes sense. That makes sense, okay.
In general, I think the school using our, our ballfields would just be fantastic for the city and the school in general, I mean.
Yeah.
Man, you've got so many girls.
At that, or meeting that we had, twenty-five, thirty, people show up.
Yeah, oh, yeah. There are, there are messages going around.
Yeah.
Constantly about getting there.
I got warm several times.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
We love people. Yeah.
Well, and the, and the, and the kicker is, you have a guy that volunteered to coach. S- Steve, uh.
Van Wy.
Van Wy.
Nice.
Huge opportunity there, I mean, unbelievable coach, really good with kids, so, yeah.
Nice. Well, I see nothing but upside on this, so I'm looking forward to your committee times, and if you need help organizing that, why don't you use which laces should we go with? Or age, okay. Miss Age is gonna be your point of contact to help get that all coordinated, okay?
Awesome.
Okay, perfect, no, thank you, Edward.
Yep.
Yeah, absolutely, our pleasure, we're just excited for you, I think it's great. Okay. Um, Justin. Here he is. The engineer we all love.
See you guys.
Hey, by the way, congratulations, Justin is newly married, so. You wanna go see a little bit? He got his MRS.
Oh, my gosh.
Oh, boy.
Um, real quick, I know this a little bit, but on the development front, just three or eight. So I did receive detention rates and planning on sitting in that hall last Friday, called that area, talked to her a little bit, and I have not go through and had final review on that, but I can, it might be done by Friday, I'll put a letter memo on that, that's, I think, I have that to hand. Um, then of course, we can be pretty, very close on it, too, just to make sure we're covering a lot more bases on the city front. In addition to, there's another element that we still need to approve of all the public infrastructure prior to accepting the development, too, so I don't think that I talked through. Previously sent a punch list of items for development that need to be taken care of prior to, you know, city assuming responsibility of that, we're gonna brush that off. Confirm anything, make sure the list is still relevant, um, revise that, give that in pass hands, that has been distributed according to.
Just to be clear, that was the punch list that existed with the previous administration that needed to be addressed, and so we're gonna check those, and then the, the stuff that we had added since.
Yeah, yeah, one of the first, first things we did.
Yeah. Yeah. Has updated that.
Yeah, attention, that's it. Best side of the. Best side is, well, the. Right upstream of the. And it's kind of, it's pretty much gonna be school property, a little overlap, home of the city property, that it could be, uh, two second. So right now, it's what I was having a full, full eye review on, where that property line is.
Sure.
Uh, for that same event, their big thing was just making sure you get the detention line, so we needed to go write that property, trying to accommodate that detention value that was their ask on it. So, it's definitely, we need to do that. Yeah, well, I think it makes sense.
And this time, Justin, this is one of the things that I look at is world with, with that whole retention basis, you know, when we had the flood five years ago, six years ago, and it went over Fourth Street and up that avenue, and then the last couple reeds that we had in the July, or whatever it, older power sold, I know what requirements for the developer was for his basin, for his area, and then the school would probably do that, but I don't know if there was any accommodations for the rest of the block that's coming down, so that, that's where I don't know, we will give on page, if we have, we need to say, make up increase in that, or the city might have to put money into to and get so it can actually hold more water, because we're requiring the developer for their water, correct?
I believe that's how the agreement was stated.
It's gonna have their.
And they're gonna have some water, but um, with the allocation from the lumberyard addition or about a new addition.
Right.
There's that water, so if there, I mean, something, I don't know.
It was gonna get no cost to the city, so we'll have to.
We have to.
So I said, think about Ryan's ask is, what I'll do in my reporting, kind of talk with him. Um, there's a quantity of water that the developer is required to take into account, and they're gonna sign that detention basin as such. Ryan's ask was, if there's room to accommodate additional runoff, then would it make sense to want to get increased in that size? It may be the cost of the city, because the agreement was, it would be no cost to the city for the developer to paint their water.
Would you just finish your preliminary review? How much time do you need, because if you're gonna. Yeah.
Yeah.
This is getting way.
Analysis.
Can that review come to the council so there's where, that's what any individual questions, they can reach out to you individually, make sure we're all square on that, okay? Does that work for you?
Yeah.
Okay, so um, do you need until Friday to finish that? If that's, yes, it's okay.
You want it early.
Okay, well, then I would ask that you communicate to the developer that once you've finished your review, you still need to run it by councils, you know, individually, just to answer their questions, since you're doing a cursory review. So that way, if there's anything we need to address, then we can take care of that, so it may or may not be available on Friday, I guess is my point.
Yep.
Sure.
I can break us of that, too.
Yeah, absolutely, okay, cool, anything else? Oh, my God.
Well, she's the committee.
Nice, Mary jokes.
I got people by eight.
Okay, that's, you're bringing, that you're bringing notes, I wanna see the notes. Okay, what else you got?
The other things. All comments, if, if those take a period for the end of the week on that, too.
Sure.
Might have to push it back.
Understand.
It's true, uh, but we should be able to get that in, those comments should be able to get taken care of right away, I'd like to get that on all the screens in August timeframe, that way, if not, part of the bill, if it exists, we can get that done this fall. Openness, utility improvements for close to ninety percent plans going through an internal review process.
Great.
Gonna get those sort of here, you know, some situational.
And then, that's what's the thing that we talk about, and uh, water being, right away on Third Street.
Yep, yep. Uh, and again, that way you can add comments on our, my license, any of that, and the, the A and R, uh, main motion work for that project as well. Um, just pull out the sign right now, so with those, we need to submit plans and specs prior to March twenty twenty-four to the A and R, for the R requirements.
Sure.
We will need that all in advance, and in addition, we need to have our contracts executed with our contractor prior to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. So just some leads, we'll need all those timelines, shouldn't have an issue with the, so.
Well, remember, guys, the first one that claims the money, get the money, and that stuff runs out sometimes, so it's important we get that.
Yeah, well, we're allocated now, so everything should, should be in our hands, we just gotta meet our timelines, and sure, data to the funds. Yeah, everything will be good, you know, go with the, that ballpark, we're spending it, three of those projects and be, I can completely construct by.
Sure.
Be a little in advance. Careful, we're planning, how we're working on getting our project list put together, so within the next probably two weeks, we're gonna send a project list to the CIP committee. Uh, get their input on it, and then, so when they, uh, throw that over to the council, for council to put on it.
Dick, that's you.
We'll take that, list, we'll get input on it, then we'll just further refine our, we plan, project spread out the next five years.
Perfect.
Uh, Baltic, we're, we're working through, um, that plan as well, so by the end of the month, they should have a more refined design, that I can send to you guys, hopefully prior to the next council meeting, I would, I'm pretty able, um, have more. Uh, implement schedules, but I'll save it out. That's all I had on my list, there was just another thing that we're crafting, letting, letting copper service rule, so by October twenty twenty-four, city needs that kind of right, it's, I think, three on that, um, so we're working together, I'm on that, and to be able to, help out and support that over summer.
Love it, never know. Thank you.
Anything for me?
No.
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 It's a grant. There was a grant that was in that. brochure or that book we get every month. Did you even apply for that? It's like six hundred thousand for major construction of a thoroughfare or a.
Okay.
I should look into that. But that's one of those things that we look into our subsequent years, as we'll see once we get that whole improvement plan put together, most projects on there.
Yeah.
Okay, start happening. Part of that C I T report too, will be, um, funding mechanism. So look at, you know, you know, all the city funds and then some of those additional grants uh, that are part of high likely, but that's something to be able to get, you know, that's one of those things I wanna try to be intentional about, not just put every grants in that funding list and it's all optimistic ones that we can.
Yeah, well, we can use it.
Absolutely.
And the C I P helps us posture that because we'll have a plan in place that makes it. Love it. Thank you. Perfect. Any other questions? Okay. Um.
Thank you.
Justin. Thank you, Justin. Yeah, it's not eight yet. Yeah, five minutes, get on, right? Miss H, I mean, Miss B, sorry, Denise Gary. I can't read, sorry.
That's good.
I'm getting excited, yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I gave you guys, uh.
Yeah. Thank you.
Kind of what was I got from three different, uh, asphalt papers. Ball area that I have for numbers to do the same thing. Uh, the man, the monster, Seal Pro came in and had the lowest for the projects of what we are kind of predicting. Plus, we get on this, they're they could cheat. Uh, million and then over lane in front of the gas station.
Right.
From kind of from in front of Debbie's property all the way to the house that was painted on or across the highway scene, it's very. That would be for them would be right at that, you know, forty or thirty-four thousand, something like that for that part of that property.
That's really meaningful.
Yeah, and then there just be three kind of major asphalt fixes. One, a second, more field where it's kind of, it's it's placed. Lot has been there, I think it was their last, it was been there like for two years. That's a repair, uh, curious old car or. Body wasn't there. And then a whole, um, value due, there's property that was put in right off the metal. There's a saying right there. Will it be the three D to repair things there, the, you know, worse right now.
Okay.
After that, everything else was just the game of price. So if you see the thirty-three thousand down at the bottom, that will equals around third street by the bridge. That's kind of really alligator. There's a couple of different spots where that it can get hurt, crack pretty bad, but it has. So it's still driving a ton of shit, still good, but for thirty-three thousand dollars, prospering. Every contractor said it's the point where it should be a street replacement. The whole basin there, so.
Sure.
That would be more of a capital.
South forth is the same way. It's starting to, it's starting to push out on the west side.
Whereas, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
We're, we're getting to the word we need. Being reserved, but this, uh, is three thousand. The bad spots where there is actually holes, the asphalt right now and the bumps on the highway. And that's actually, there's bumps all across the, it's just that spot right there. So I would recommend going to Seal Pro, you know, it's everything under fifty thousand. But if you look at the other estimates, they were the whole assignment, so.
Basically, we have this out here, we have it, I mean, to put it all in the streets or get this done, so we talk. Okay, so this is under what we had budgeted to do the emergency stuff, just to be clear on that, guys, okay?
And there's buys this time on a major lovely avenue expansion where it's not, we're chomping at the bit quite so bad because that was so bad.
Get by sometime.
Yeah, because the rest of us, I mean.
Right, it's worse than the winner.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
Is there, uh, I'm sorry, usually there's a year warranty, is that on this as well?
Usually they are pretty good with this, I say. Yeah, usually I, I guess, I didn't probably, I think, or Seal Pro did it, did a major over a hundred thousand dollars. Like probably twenty above in twenty twelve. We had a lot of blowouts in town back then, and they've all moved off. And years, so. And they actually are the ones that came that can go. Whole block, part of that.
Yeah.
Any other questions? So we need a motion now to allocate that, cause it, or is it budgeted, John, so he can go ahead and do it? What do we need to do?
Yeah, just need to approve the, I'll make a motion to approve the expense of. Uh, we talk about this every time. Should I do a not to exceed amount? Or do not, or being such a quote, I mean, that's gonna be pretty.
Oh, but there might be some spots where I might get some.
Well, maybe not to exceed forty-five. Yeah, I mean, be comfortable with that. Variance of.
And I'd let you know if they say that they, you know, that it's about a month, they would come back and say they can't, they'll spread or.
Right.
Travis, are you intending to Brian Foddsby authorized to execute?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so I'll make a motion to approve the expense now to exceed forty-five thousand for the asphalt repairs needed. Give Ryan the approval to, um, sign on behalf of the state, act on behalf of the city.
Second.
Okay, so we got a first, we got a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? We have our streets.
They.
We have our streets, yeah.
Old open for grades and, uh, looking at for grades kind of in our, in our. That was going to, so I didn't reach out to anybody else. We've always kind of, they've always been good for us. Um, the repair of the fire hydrant is up on Flowing Street. It started to be in this winter, um, what I think happened is exactly what happened. Your goal where it, the top off the main stem of the base of the hydrant just popped off. The main, um, it's out of the. Um, so this will be the return of that. Um, same time there, mantle out, we've overlaid. Couple of years ago, right next to that fire hydrant, so they're gonna be working in the same areas. That, that would be just to get that back out, get that out of the.
That's employees.
Yep, or, or, right at the end, right next to, uh, Green Steel. Uh, and the third one is the sewer repair for City Hall. Um, we had a flood. April. That we had, they televised it, and what it looks like is two thousand and three. When they put the new sewer, our water main in, um, it's right above where this break is, so the ground probably settled around it.
Sure.
So there would be the repair of that right out in front of City Hall, so, um.
Up there?
Yeah, as you go outside, there is like an orange X in it, uh, the asphalt is where that break is, or the best guess would be televised.
Sure.
So that would just be these first rate.
Well, I think everybody here would have reached out and worked even back here, so.
There's no word.
Right, is that Henry shut down later than?
Right.
It's okay.
There is one right down down the line.
Okay. Don't we need approval for this too then?
Yeah.
Okay, so what's the total in this, in this?
Sixty-three. Eighteen, nineteen, five-ish.
And where are our estimators in the?
So you're. So.
My mental calculators are pretty great.
It's like twenty thousand, right? Eighteen, seven.
The only thing that would be, I was questioning that, I guess, between Steel Pro. If Steel Pro hasn't been here, I can find it, first rate had been here. We might be able to get a better number from the paper than having. But like, you know, how I get that asphalt replacement in the state.
Oh, yeah, just have them.
That, there, if we had our figures. If, if it would be terribly cheap. But if it's not gonna be any tighter for price.
Worth the conversation at least.
Yeah, and that would be, it's all. First rate was here first.
Obviously.
And Steel Pro might be here.
How much variance do you need on this? As far as the quote.
Mine would be more, I have to contact, I send out for the change. This one would be easy to change, approval point out and we'll get everything done.
Yeah.
It's just sealed over, be adjusted, and then I need to mark with the library.
Okay, so what you need is, um, approval to negotiate this proposal up to twenty thousand? Okay.
I'll make that motion to approve the expense of not to exceed twenty thousand for the sewer and water repairs needed. Yeah, I'll give Ryan the authority to act on behalf of the city.
Second.
So I get Travis is the first, Ryan is the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Boom, okay, infant swings.
I'm gonna touch on this one.
Oh, yeah.
So we had our insurance, they began, uh, and they did a walk around. Different processes and gave us their recommendation back. What would you do? It was different things for our insurance. One of the things was they would a lot of our partners. They means that swings that has insufficient ever, we should remove that from it. So that's one where I think you need to look at replacing it.
Like entirely or just the swings?
Which one?
It would be better. We're too close to that, or anything in the back, and you won't have enough space in the front. So you're supposed to have.
Okay.
It's ten feet tall. In front of it, you have that twenty feet in front of it, you have to have twenty feet behind it. So you need probably six, seven feet there, so there's. Yeah, so looking at that, there is only five foot between swings there. It's something where we should go get rid of spacing and look something. And then we can change it. Um, with that, we look at that.
Sure. Sure.
So we can look at it, the only one that is right on, is the bird park one. So we could order another, even swing, but there isn't that many swings there.
There's only a two, right?
Correct, so.
What's it take to add a swing set to Bird Park?
The, add a swing set to the other part.
I mean, not, I mean, expanding the whole pit of the swing sets in.
The swing set is, it's got safety going around it. If anything else. Well, we have to remove trees, uh, just the one way or the other.
Got it.
The one way I think it actually comes in, uh, Walter's or Kramer's property, I don't know where their driveway, where our property is. And there is an elevation changer, so that's where the squail.
Right.
Drainage ways there, of west, so you have to go to the east, and then there's some pretty big trees to be, so that, and then that's between the other playground. That was once kind of, it'd be the easiest, but if we wanted that, another swing set quickly would be difficult to.
Right, right.
Well, and when I was doing some research on that too, a T swing might be the least expensive way to go, where it's a single pull and it comes up into a T and you put a swing here and a swing here. So that might be the easiest. And there are no swings up in that one.
Right, that multiple.
Yeah, so that might.
That would be, that's placed by the. For a playground.
Um, yeah.
You factor that in your project, for sure. I don't think.
For future.
Yeah, don't do anything now, but that was the one point that I had, I had heard that. We put infant swings in, that's great, but if we're taking away, we only have two swings at Bird Park, if you take one of them away, then.
Yeah.
You kind of limit yourself. It'd be nice if you had a whole second swing set, but you can have two and two.
And that's.
Accommodate more.
The hard part is requirements per se, the height, you have to go double that usually in front and behind.
Sure, sure, sure. Okay.
So, in, in whether that, does that fall into capital improvement, where we look at all the other parks as well, see what improvements are needed overall?
So what is it? Being when you're planning, do you, do you need a ten foot height?
You still, well, it's, it's kind of was. The other apparatus. So is the height, so your infants, when you say you mounted to that. These women that serve, it still has to have that requirement.
I know that if you're putting in my team, like has been suggested, can that T be eight foot instead of ten foot? Which would reduce the size that you need for your, so how we say here.
Eight foot, yes.
Because it's an infancy, doesn't need to be. Too tall or anything like that. Do you need your ten foot?
That's your, your swing, so if you say it's only like six foot swings, do you only have like a five, five foot weight?
I hear what you're saying.
In a short.
They do like to go. My daughter, you couldn't push her high enough.
I say. Probably like nine months.
Yeah.
So I say what they call it, a cop. God, they're smoking.
In your opinion, do you think it's worth, um, taking another look at Bird Park just to see what's available, or do you think that we're just kind of blocked?
We didn't look at it, but I know there are just trees in.
There's a lot of trees.
And that's.
I think that physically, there's room between it and the next swing set. It's a pretty wide. I don't remember how the trees lay down there to.
Right, me too.
Cause there, there's a, there's a lot of them.
Do we wanna give him the authority to spend a certain amount of money that if he comes up with a solution, we trust him with it? Because getting an infant swing in this town, even if it's in just one park, I think is a really great idea. This has been an ask since I've been, um.
Forever.
Involved with City Hall and talking to citizens. I have so many moms asking for infant swings.
Yeah, we want, we better want. I, I. Equipment.
Well, I'm just thinking, if we're focused on Bird Park, cause that's the most lovely one we get. Then, um, maybe focus on that, figure it out, and then what would be the high end of it? Cause when I was looking at it, the equipment alone was like twelve hundred for the T and then the swings. And so installation, would that be on you or would that be something else, or how does that work?
Always done, like supervised installation, which is half the price of having them do it.
Right.
You'd like to have them, they cover.
Of course. So like three grand would probably, or.
Well, that would probably do the installation and the equipment, but then you still have to save it all, and then you need the checks and.
So like, would five do it?
I think we analyze it till it's next month and figure out what even we're working with in the first place and see a logical. Logical way we can accommodate with maybe, without maybe wasting money before a capital improvement plan comes out in the big grand scheme of things. And obviously, if we, we can get by, which be hard to get by putting a new swing set in like all the kites without, cause you're gonna have safety zone and all that stuff, so that's not gonna.
That's why I say Bird Park is the easiest, let's right, we get single swinging.
And I know with like a T swing, you still have to like solve the outline that they're now.
Of course.
That, because you still have to take that existing one.
Right.
You get six feet away from like.
Sure, 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 sure.
Yeah, I mean, I'd, I'd like to take inventory, will we have, you know, more in depth basis and see if there's something we can accommodate. I mean, can we at the very least get one in down at Bird Park and we start there?
Want to put in, in for a top or something.
I think put one, yeah, just leave it as one.
Yeah, that's.
It's very shady.
If you got a Tyler down there, you got to, um, set.
Yeah, that's the ideal.
I, if it was me, that's what I would start. Yeah.
Sure. Okay. But, I mean, we have to get rid of the merry-go-round and everything, though. Unbelievable, wow, that's like a death rite. Really?
Thing that's.
The slide is fine.
A big stainless slide, really?
Oh, my gosh, that's crazy.
That's all, yeah, the swing set was the only thing that they.
Wow, it's their favorite of all parks, it's their favorite. It's a real playground, which playground, the kids just. Yeah, it's a real one. Yeah. You take off the first layer of your skin going down that thing. Okay, Ryan, let's take a look at, just take a look at. Water tower. Lacy, you need to see what we have allocated, cause we have something that we could do a quick swing on that. No, no.
Well, that's not good, same.
I know, it actually really does. I found this particular joke set. Not the swingers. Okay.
Stay. Um. Like Justin question, um, right here, just let.
Yeah.
You you let service line. They gave out with more requirements on letting poppers. So like right now, letting copper be sampled every year for certain residents. See if there is a leak team coming out of the water line. It's actually a lot. Pretty much primarily either. All lines and water. We'll take a sample. I've got the bottles here. It's in popular residence. Just to see how much it's leaking into the water and that we. Use our human consumption. With this new inventory, what BPAs now is now what they want to know is what is coming into everybody's house. So anything after nineteen eighty seven, everybody's I have to go on and come in and say, I have a poly line, a copper line and. Everything in the streets are usually PR, P D C. Or C nine zero P D C and usually a poly or a copper line. So they're not looking. They want that inventory from half the nineteen eighty seven, but everything else is before it's going to be. Happening to worry is if they you have what kind of lines you may have, it's led and be identified and then they're going to. For. Things to do which will be.
Wow.
And same thing with service lines. So. The voltage is probably ninety percent. Age and is. P D C in our street.
Oh, thank goodness. Okay, that's my question.
We have some A C up and got some training and I have two or three blocks of. Uh, down more field of cast and with our. Ash and gold, that's the all replace up there. So we will have a lot of just. P D C. Um, so we'll be good. We'll have to just do some research on all kinds of things done in the past. If they go up to the curb stops with new service line, copper, poly, or did they tighten the whole stuff? That's gonna be our problem that we're gonna have to look at. If they didn't do that. What they're gonna require us to, you can put it unknown today, but they're gonna require us to find out what is actually in the streets. So.
I would, if all lines were televised. You know how much stuff is televised when they.
Well, this is just for water. This is nothing to replace water.
Got it.
Yeah.
This is all just.
Um, brad of water.
Yeah.
So this is gonna be fast. So it'll be. Anything prior to nineteen eighty seven. So it's pretty much everything less than. This period and be happening to you. So what it's gonna be, everybody either city will have to come in or I'll have to come in and take a picture of the service line. Don't get it what it is. For homeowners, there will be information coming out of the homeowners there they themselves. We'll do an inventory. We'll do an inventory. We have our records for our listeners, create it myself for the service line. But it's just something on three. And this has to be October of twenty twenty four that we have to have all of this information done. And that will be step one. And then they're rational based on the other stuff of what needs. So once we then worry, then they're gonna say now if you have a. Lead line in your street or in. Mediate it. So this is for them. So it's gonna be. Residents and stuff. You get this off.
How do you know?
They have a maintenance test to see if you have galvanized. Or a scratch test to see if it comes up, if you can tell it to this just turns to like a shiny silver like quarter. That's probably a lead line. If it's black, it's probably poly. You know, if you have a poly or whatever, if it's. Harness with green, it's usually a proper. So. But then we can come and verify it also to see.
Yeah, I'll say they have somebody qualified to come verify these test results. Or do I?
Well, we're just gonna actually do it, but. It's kind of a. Faith base.
Right.
That's their question inside. But yeah, that's what it'll show how they think that you can do it. And then they'll take you, they want you to take.
Perfect. Interesting.
Well, this will be fun. That'll be a fun inventory.
So, yep. Here or so.
I know. Maybe we can do our 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 literal census at the same time since we have to check every house. We get an actual count. That might be a good.
Check the sanding dirt stuff that they have.
We'll just do a big old checklist and do it all.
Yep.
I love it.
Okay, so that's that. That's just gonna be coming out. Uh, and then last week I did more to uh. Shoot all the. Water reclamation plan. Um. So they they're doing a two hundred million dollar expansion that so this is their process going on. What they um were talking about was regionalization of all sewer and they haven't talked about it for a couple of years. They kind of took a couple of years off. Uh. I had been through it years and I don't know. The one thing is that I was told by uh their engineers that it really cost per dividend for us to find it. It's going to be multi millions of dollars just to get it to us. Um, their fees back. And years ago, eight years ago, and they're worth like four dollars and fifty cents a thousand for every household to use. They're of the six dollars. So that would be on top of your home service. So.
So let me say that again.
So.
Cost us millions of dollars to tap in. And then we have another fee on top of it. We have a user fee on top of that, which the user fee they have complete control of and can raise that well.
But you have an unlimited. Amount basically that you can supply to that line essentially.
Right.
That was the way I interpreted back when I first we had we talked about options was. They basically.
You would probably build into like. Build into their plans. City of T and brand and I think right now they bought into the expansion.
Right.
So.
Yeah, you're at the mercy of.
Reclamation. Is that like drinking water then or is that?
No, no, that's sewer water.
Okay.
It's where they clean. Yeah.
Water, water wreck is where your waste goes. They clean the water, put the water back in the big suit. Okay, and then the rest of it goes out in the fields. Water pier is where they turn that water into your drinking water. Yeah. How does that make you feel?
No, it's not very good.
They haven't done that.
Yeah. Those.
Have you been watching the reclamation plans and stuff like that at all? Cause I know that you're.
Well.
Okay.
And I think one of the biggest things is what's falling is to size where we. I'm bringing one of that major, major, major upgrade to the waste water system. It's where you do the feasibility report, you know, like we talked, Ryan, you know, don't next step to be a group expansion, but if we have to upgrade the mechanical plan. Do enough feasibility of apples and apples. If you answer good marks, that's every day. Um, and regionalizations can see what more fraction. If there are some points that are costly, it's gonna make cost. Rather do that analysis now, but it's. Good thing we got staff and I've been looking at some of those regionalization efforts that some quality students are being aware, tracking and being available. And I was having that.
Well, and that's the beautiful thing about our city being in this little pocket of mother nature. Keeping us like a little cocoon from everything, right? Okay. Right?
Yeah, partners gotta find that they're gonna start. Start.
Yeah, I remember that. Yeah.
So and they're they are putting.
Whatever wants to.
Yeah.
Right? So we gotta get across that river.
Our would be. That was best. That would be the.
Stop.
Plan right now and all projections and banners. Very expensive.
Right. Right.
Tie into them too.
So and it's been my understanding that we're kind of. Safe right now because we have the ability to expand the lagoons because Ulrich did that big land deal years back to make sure that we had a way to expand, right? And so. Um, so we have the flexibility to command our own. Processes for at least in the short term. Right?
Right. Fifteen percent percent.
Yeah.
But it does sound like.
Right.
People might get growth, you know.
Yeah, if it's industrial or commercial or anything like that. And one of the biggest things is when you're getting um those. Um, request for information, everything industrial coming through our town is asking for massive infrastructure needs. So we'll take along with a lot of other communities that get these R F I's for prospective businesses coming in. None of us have the infrastructure to sustain it. So what we've been asking economic development um. Office is to come up with some things that are actually real estate for us little bedroom communities, since we don't have the the water or the means to be able to even. Approach those businesses. So just so you know, those conversations are being had. Okay? Anything else? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ryan.
Miss B.
Uh, we had several calls and. Couple drop-ins with. On code enforcement issues. So I think that maybe. Since this was finalized, we maybe have this resolved. Um, it sounds like Ben. Is when we start taking over these, so letters will be a little bit more. Frequent than they have been. Um. Just under, we just want everybody to understand that if there's a call on. A yard that needs to be tended to or something, it's not something that the city can. Call that homeowner on right away and think it's gonna be fixed overnight. It's.
It's a process.
It's like, it's a long process. Um.
But they don't go ignored. No. So when the calls are made, the suggestions are made. We absolutely look into it. We absolutely research it, but there is a process to it.
Time to assuming process.
Some varies. City, if we have to go.
More. For example, yeah.
And then left on it. And then it goes to either property taxes, like we assess it and debunked. So we want to help out first as much as possible. We like those property, we want to take care of their properties. So it isn't another burden to the taxpayers to have to cover because a lot of the times. Some of the properties were once were blown or the banks buying that tug rate in our debt is white off. The people will be over. So it's just one of those things that we try to push as hard as we can to get it paid in payroll, but. We we wish we have to pull up there.
I I think the message though is that I I know sometimes when people call in, they're wondering why isn't it taken care of the next day? And that's just not how the process works. And so but just know that they are being addressed. They are being tracked. We are following up with that. They don't just go unnoticed or untouched. And so. But we appreciate everybody wanting our town to look as good as it can. And so um we appreciate the extra set of eyes, but at the same time, we just. Ask for patience.
Summer is really busy too. So if you don't, you you see something. Oh.
So there's, yeah, can you still do that online? Was there? There used to be, yeah, when button you click online, it would submit the point, right?
Yep.
Do we have? Like uh like a clean funds for your yards.
If we want.
Yeah.
If we get. Then we.
How about snow? Sidewalks. Like if you go out and just notice and it's a charge. So I know. I know that there is other cities with it and maybe something we shouldn't.
What's that?
Uh, kind of a fine.
Well, the 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 tricky that and I don't disagree with you, but the tricky thing is is really. At the at the end of the day, which I hate that phrase, but the city really wants to work with. Citizens and have them understand because more often than not, it's my belief that the citizens maybe don't understand the ordinance requirements. And then they understand that it's actually delineated and actually cleared out. Now, some citizens may and just don't want to do it. But you know, the the first approach that we always want to take is education. And help them understand what the rules.
I know like. Fred, that doesn't. So there's always a warning.
Yep.
And but later there's they're following up with a fine. Uh, both arms and and.
Well, and I think if a house goes into court of closure. They have to do this ex amount of payments. I think it's three consecutive things. I swear to that now, but so that's ninety days. That's a lot of grass and rock to make.
Oh, yes. And a lot of the time. The property managers are.
Yeah.
For maintaining it. And they tell us that they'll maintain it, but.
Yes, they have the staff to do it.
The one thing we've looked at and I know different communities that I've been in. Is having a third party. Due to the work. The hard part is the third party wants to be paid by the city. So the city is still lucky.
On the.
From the. So it's. It gets done by a third party. It's their liability. It's everything else. So the city has that line, no liability on that. But the question part is.
And more often than not, in foreclosure, then we're just basically eating that expense. So. So but I think it's good that we're talking about this. So everybody understands it. And um and of course, our fines and fees still need review, Brian. So you make a good point. Um, enforcement of that is kind of tricky though. And I think at the forefront is being a good neighbor and just trying to be conscientious of having your property look as good as you want your neighbors' properties to look. So.
Well, um, on the latter, though, well. I think if I had a neighbor that I knew was going through a tough time and their front yard looked like crap, I would just mow it.
Yep.
Cause maybe they just need some help.
Yeah.
Or maybe they don't have the right equipment to cut it because I know that a lot of complaints are sloped. So or maybe they're physically not able to do it. So there's there's a lot of things there. So maybe getting to know your neighbors and seeing how you can help is another solution.
Yeah, exactly.
I saw.
Well, just a bit of my. Is what you.
Yep.
And unfortunately, we've found ourselves in a situation where we've had neighbors in the past where we did go over and mowed. And. The comment that came back from them is you'll be back next week, right?
Oh, mine. Okay.
So now it becomes our job. David was not excited.
I can understand that.
But um, they had. And this was past. Okay. Um. A few years back. They had jokingly talked about, yeah, they got letters from the city and went to front yard, left the backyard. We had, we'd sit tall. And they thought our city council was stupid. Because the front yard looked good. And it wasn't until somebody came in to look at another property that was adjacent. Where a different complaint had gone in on their garden space being. Um, and then they saw these people's backyard and made a clean up of the backyard.
Got it.
So, yeah, it's it's one thing to be a neighbor. It's another thing to, I don't think you've got supper planted on your forehead.
Why wasn't trying to say that?
No, I'm just, I'm just saying. You get it.
It's a tricky game.
Were able to buy and equipment. No reason they couldn't raid. We just got tired of it. Well, there are some people that every once in a while made a little bit of help, but I'm. You know. But I don't think it should become a everyone gets hurt. So.
It's a tricky situation. We'll just keep looking at it.
People should be living in a park.
Any further discussion on this? Okay, go ahead, Lindsay.
Hey, um, I am requesting approval. To have both Lacy and I be joining the C F O. Group, which is the Southeast Area Finance Officers Group. They meet once a month. Um, various locations. We would have a meal and then some education on what's going on, state, regional.
What's the cost?
Um, it is a hundred dollars per person.
So they're asking for a hundred dollars per person to join the C F O organization?
I will say that this is generally due in January, great. We are only gonna be members. This point, we would only be members for half the year and they will not. This point, we would only be members for half the year, and they will not reduce the fee.
Oh, okay, that's nice.
So it's a hundred dollars a year per person, per person.
Yeah.
I think that's kind of a no-brainer for fairly fresh people in a finance officer position, and that's a very little expense to make, and you know, I would have no problem.
I don't think you have to produce, that's a pretty small amount, right, John?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, wish granted, what else you got?
Um, utility shut-off, there's a property in town that, I don't wanna say vacant, but I know that they've not walked into. The facility or into the structure for quite some time, they have no garbage service right now, and, um, we've had. We've had some difficulty in collecting payment on their wire service. Um, so now the discussion has come up of shutting off of their water and super service. We don't have a snowbird rate, but since they, because they would be coming back, but in this case. They have not been in the facility for some time.
Should we know if they plan to come back?
Um, from remarks, I would say no.
Okay.
Isn't it three months and you can turn the water off? We have that, is that actually in ord, in ordinance or ready?
They would still be, they would still recharge the minimum.
You need to have been discovered the story.
Right.
I think that was the whole number of rating, we went through the three thousand per month usage, but they had to cover the forty dollars.
Remember the base.
If I recall, the snowbird rate isn't in effect anymore, because we needed that for S R, for the system.
I think we, uh. It's been a long time since I looked at the ordinance, but I, I knew that we'd been seeing revisions. By a while, but several years ago. And put a provision, I believe, that. As a condition of. A new person, new occupant getting service that can be unpaid. Amounts by the prior occupant needed to be covered. We need to look at that.
Yeah, it sounds like we need to look at the ordinance, and then from a utility shut-off standpoint, who has the authority to do it, John? Does it have to be a council approval, or does city staff at the rate? Or do we have to look at that too?
The county manager and the city council has to.
That's why I was thinking, like, why, why are we?
I think we need to look at the ordinance.
Okay.
And follow the ordinance, because I think what procedure is specified there.
Yeah. And so, so that was a good one, so any questions, I'll still.
So Lacey's gonna look into that, John, and now she has a question, who's gonna reach out to you, okay?
Probably Lacey or somebody you know.
Sure, I'll do it. Hey, I have one more thing, I'll need to set a date for by the plan.
Yes. Everybody get up the calendars.
Same here again.
Oh, boy. Get your calendar out.
You have a rough date you're trying to aim for. You have a rough date we didn't have.
What a month, last time we did is September seventh. So hopefully August.
We're doing, we're doing in August, that's, that's my date, I wouldn't have done in August.
There we go. When was first day of school?
August seventeenth.
And so, September seventeenth, with council meeting is gonna be August eighth.
Let's please not do it, the, uh, that week. Because that's the same week that Dog Days is being a, so we have not that many days.
So you guys, let's take a look at the week of August twenty-first or the, the week of August twenty-eighth.
And go on the twenty-third, fourth, and fifth of August.
Can you be held to a short?
Preferably, because they're getting ready to leave on the twenty-third, fourth, and fifth?
Yeah, that's my wife's birthday.
Oh.
We'll get a birthday.
Yeah, that'd be awesome.
I would be more inclined the week of the twenty-eighth.
What if, what if August twenty-ninth, um, either, um, August twenty-eighth or August twenty-ninth, where we said, well, that.
I would lean more towards the twenty-ninth.
Twenty-nine, anybody else?
Twenty-nine, but hour early.
Whatever time we need, we need a couple hours, don't we?
I think in the past we did a, what was it, an afternoon?
Yeah.
Four o'clock in the afternoon.
I give that article like four thirty. What about that?
It's four thirty, right?
What about that night instead of work hours?
I would love to do it after work hours, because I'll be gone for three days prior.
So what time would that be?
Five.
Uh, I.
I mean, I could probably leave a lot of four thirty.
I, I, her point starts at four thirty.
On Tuesday?
Yes.
What about Monday?
I'd rather it on Tuesday, but I mean, would. Is six thirty too late, or?
For a budget meeting, absolutely.
Okay.
They can get drawn on.
Yeah.
Okay.
The ones in the past have anyways.
Right.
Um, well, let me talk to the family and I can, I can make five o'clock work.
Anybody else have an issue with five o'clock on the twenty-ninth? Or two?
Tuesday the twenty-ninth.
I can make it, I might be a shade late.
So let's try to shoot for the twenty-ninth at five o'clock. Okay, this is.
Excellent, sorry.
Okay.
Oh, goodness.
Funny, I'll be.
For reference, I had four hours allowed the last time.
Yeah, it was four hours lasted.
Is it that long?
I can't, I can't.
It's kind of your, your meeting to assess the, go through every single thing. Redesign, yeah, too. It's nice if you can do it in the afternoon, it's so hard to do it.
Well, yeah, it's hours from.
Miss H, what you got?
We have the driveway carnival coming up this Saturday from one to four.
Woo-hoo.
The, the passport driveway part is from one to four, and then starting from at four is going home six behind. The Sunday Cafe and Library area will have bouncy houses, and the Sunday Cafe is gonna do a. Uh, barbecue pulled pork and kettle chips special. Uh, we've got a bunch of prizes lined up, hundred dollars from Classic Corner, Safari Norvings, we're for tons of prizes we're gonna draw for. The, yeah, the Sandlot Sexy and Hibbert Imaginary Place, for getting us something for kids. Um, so that's gonna be really fun, and we're hoping to get a lot of people for that. Um, and that's a fundraiser for the Parks and Rec Fund, so that we can get stuff like these swings and stuff like that, and so. Um, so that's coming up, Dog Days, um.
It's coming together beautifully.
Yeah, yeah, it is. Dog Days, uh, I think we have everything handled down for a schedule, uh. We've got a bunch of people listed for parade, we still haven't decided which way the street we're gonna go, but we'll figure that out.
Yeah.
Um, car show, we're getting entries for that, and then, uh, we keep adding to the kids' carnivals, um, so that's.
Fun.
Fun, yeah, and people have reached out to me to see if they can join, and that's, but. Oh, pyrotechnics, so I need, I don't know what I need from you guys for this, but they have an agreement, they sent me. Uh, D and I Railroad has given us, uh, two thousand dollars to, uh, be the sponsor for the fireworks show. And so, we need this agreement signed, um, they've already sent us the two thousand dollars, uh, the questions that he had. And now I've got him off of them, uh, were, can he do it in the mall building then, like he did previously? And are we gonna cover in the permit, which I assume we would cover the permit since more than once asking him to cover yourself. So that's, that's what I.
Now, isn't this, did he, is this the same guy that did the fireworks for Dog Days last year?
Yes, okay, yeah.
So then basically the same as we did last year.
Yeah.
John, do we issue ourselves a permit when it's the city that's doing the, that?
We could if we wanted.
Seems kind of redundant.
We had a city check, check, uh, check to the city.
So, do we have to issue a, a permit to him to have fireworks outside of the Fourth of July though? And how to just be a zero-cost permit to make it all legit?
Well, I believe so, yeah.
Okay. Okay, so what we need is, um, we need a motion to issue a zero-cost permit to set off fireworks within the city of all.
We have to actually fill out with form and then waive it, can we just get ourselves?
You should, and you're gonna wanna verify he's got insurance, and if you remember the plant, we were more tipped over and brought a bunch of kids.
Yeah.
Probably fifteen years ago, because I represent the kids. Yeah, so you definitely wanna make sure.
Okay.
Wait, the captain is.
Yep.
Bring it to the August meeting and then.
And I just wanted to say we've got seven thousand dollars received so far for Dog Days donation, so, yeah. John, like, yeah, that's awesome, we've made our goal like two thousand dollars to go, so we'll get to add some more things, so, and help out more than the.
That's fun, good job, that is it, her lace has done amazing job. Spearheading this and with working directly with all sorts of people throughout the community, this is not a one-man show. I'm just saying she's spearheaded, definitely, it's been everybody working together, it's been really fun, it's gonna be a great time, great time. So do we need authority to sign that agreement, or we need to review everything and handle it next month, John? Let's review it.
Sure.
August eighth, okay.
Yep, right, we.
August eighth, okay.
As long as there, as long as I get back our pyrotechnics knows that we want that date secured, I guess is the only hurdle I can see.
Well, we, yeah.
I have deemed out there, well, covered, it's every day.
I assume the fire department will be available.
Okay, thank you, thank you for that.
Thank you, Mike.
Okay, anything else? Okay, well, now we're to the petition portion, so I'm gonna step away, Nikki, you're in charge.
Step away, you're in charge.
What am I? Where are you with? Yeah, don't give me any heads up. I go, I'm stepping away, Nikki, you're in charge.
There you go, talking fast again.
And so you're to the petition portion of the meeting, so now you take over as president of the.
Assuming it was guy.
They've got a chair on. For when you got that chair.
Oh, God. Oh, not sure, guard ourselves at fifty seventy.
Okay, so, um, I'm guessing that we need to look at this petition as to whether or not, did you talk about it, it has to be accepted?
Um, isn't this where you guys go up to Sarah?
Yes, we need to talk to Sarah. Make the motion to move into exec session at eight forty-four. The, um.
Second. I'm sure I got this one correctly.
David.
Hi.
Hi.
Seen them.
None.
You're supposed to ask that.
I'm supposed to ask that.